It is now 7:30 PM. And we are going to officially call the meeting to order. So, Mr. Verlingo, can you please call the role?
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Chrysler.
Here.
Mr. Hairston.
Here.
Mr. Hairston.
Here.
Okay. Ms. Ma.
Here.
Ms. Pickle Antonia.
Here. So, if you are watching along or watching this later, the purpose of this special board meeting, like I said, is first, we're going to have a public discussion about the process of hiring both an architect and a construction manager at risk. After we have that conversation, there is one item for board action. But for the discussion part, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barrett. You can kind of turn it over to and introduce our guests who are going to kind of walk us through the process and give us opportunity to ask questions.
Yes, thanks. Thanks very much. We're excited to talk about, you know, hiring the professionals that are going to help us through Phase Two of our Master Facilities Plan. And so, we have Chris McCloskey, Amy Riedel, and I'm not sure, is Casey here tonight? Chris?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, I didn't see it. And Casey Cross from Brick or Neckler. They're going to talk about what a school district needs to do when they pass a bond issue. They are ready to start a building project and how we need to go about procuring an architect and a construction manager at risk. And they'll talk about a couple of other things. So, we're excited to get started with this project. And we just want our board and our community to be informed of the process. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chris McCloskey, Amy and Casey. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Really appreciate the opportunity to come give you an update of all of the good things that we've been doing with the district administration to get all of the professionals on board for the project so that we can move it forward. So, the first thing that we'll be chatting about is just a little bit of project background information. Then we'll pivot into the architect procurement process and where we are in, you know, in the procurement process. Talk a little bit about the CMR process and where we are in that process. And when we say CMR, what we are referring to there is the construction manager at risk. That's the delivery model that the board has selected to deliver the project. It is one of the new delivery models that is available to public owners in Ohio. I guess it's not new. It's been around since 2012. But it's one of the newer ways that a that a board can deliver a project. And it's the way that the elementary project was delivered. So, the board is familiar with that process, but we'll refer to that entity as a CMR, construction manager at risk. And then we'll touch on the owner's representative role for the project in a little bit of detail later on in this presentation. So, with that, Amy, I'll let you go ahead and just provide a little bit of project background.
Yeah, so this slide shows a it's a reminder of the project in the timeline. We have the total project with an estimated cost of $250 million. And inside that total project, you have the high school with an estimated cost of $190 million, an 18-month design phase, and a 24-month construction phase with an open date of fall 2024. Also, inside that total project, you have three middle schools and for additions and renovations for a cost of $31 million with a 12-month design phase and an 18-month construction phase. These middle schools would have an open date of fall 2023. You also have two elementary schools for additions and renovations for a total cost of $20 million. And it will follow the elementary schools follow the same schedule as those middle schools do.
So, as you can see, there's going to be quite a bit going on with the project. You're going to have six buildings in, you know, various stages of design and construction all simultaneously occurring at the same time so that you can achieve those open dates in fall of 2023 and fall of 2024 for the high school. And so, one of the questions that we get periodically is, in a project of this size, why would you just select one architect of record and not multiple architects of record for each individual building? And there are a few reasons that that we are really thinking about and wanting to have one architect of record. And those are listed there. We'll get into those in a little bit more detail. But the first one is your project is on a relatively tight timeframe. I mean, it's certainly a workable timeframe, but it's aggressive. And there are a few reasons for that. It's nice to have a single point of contact with the architect of record. It's even nicer to have a single point of responsibility for your architect of record. And then your high school brings a little bit of a different flavor just due to the size of that project to your overall building project. And so, you can you can take advantage of that. And so, you know, getting into the issue of the timeframe, the buildings need to run simultaneously due to the federal tax spending obligations for the bond proceeds. And that's in order to maintain the tax-exempt status of those bonds. And so, in the first year, you need to spend 10% of the funds. In the second year, 30%. In the third year, by the third year, 60%. And then by the fifth year, you need to have spent 85% of the bond proceeds. And the architect of record needs to sign a letter to that effect for the tax due diligence process, basically representing to the IRS that the building funds will be spent. There's a reasonable expectation that the funds will be spent within five years. And so, it's nice to have that conversation and get that information and essentially that letter from your main architect of record. And then let's talk a little bit about, you know, the single point of contact. It really results in a cohesive team working with the district to develop the project. Certainly, there's going to be more than one member of the architect's team that is going to be involved in the project. There's going to be multiple members of the team. But having that single firm is really what creates that cohesive team environment. And it really avoids the need to coordinate district administration time with multiple architect firms. Your district administrators are certainly still going to need to continue to conduct the business of the district while this project is going on. And so, having that process with the architect as streamlined as possible is really the best approach. And then when we talk about having a single point of responsibility for the architect, less problematic for simultaneous construction projects to be able to just pick up the phone and call the lead individual for your architect if you've got a problem and then allow that individual to sprinkle it out downstream if need be. And again, you know, that that kind of speaks to that second bullet point there. It's just if a problem arises, you've got one individual to pick up the phone and call. And we don't want to think about problems, but you know, it's a large building project. And it's nice to be able to just have that line of communication. And then the third one, it certainly facilitates coordination with the local building authority. There are going to be a lot of submissions moving to the building authority at the same time. And having a coordinated approach with the building authority is certainly going to smooth the process out. And the building authority will certainly appreciate that as well. And then the last thing I wanted to chat about is the high school. It's a very large project. And candidly, it's a draw for large national firms that have the bandwidth for this size of project and scope of project to bring that cutting-edge design to all of the Phase Two buildings, including the elementaries and the middle schools. You've got some great firms that are in the mix here and they're national firms. So, the high school brings them to that to the table. And it's nice to have that. And so, having one of those individuals is going to be great for the project. So, Amy, I'll have you talk a little bit about how that selection process works.
Okay, so we know why, one, and this is the selection that we went through to get there or the district and the evaluation committee went through to get there. It's a qualifications-based selection process. The district published the request for qualifications. And then the evaluation committee reviewed those statements of qualifications that were submitted by the architect firms. And then the evaluation committee shortlisted three firms. Those three firms were interviewed. And now the evaluation committee is ready to make a recommendation to the board. This just shows a timeline of what the evaluation committee went through from Election Day to publishing the request for qualifications, meeting to select the shortlist, interviewing, asking the architects to submit more answers to their questions, and then all the way up to the final evaluation committee meeting. And you'll see between the architect interviews and the final evaluation committee meeting, I tried to put in all of our meetings, but there were so many that the evaluation committee did a really good job of discussing the references and the qualifications and vetting all of the shortlisted firms up until that last evaluation committee meeting. This was the evaluation committee members. You have district representatives and two parent representatives in Chris Greycar and Catherine Hope Cunningham. And this list shows the responding firms. So, above the line, you'll see the shortlisted architect firms. Those are the firms that the evaluation committee chose to shortlist and interview. And then the firms below the line are the firms that the evaluation committee chose not to interview. And they were not shortlisted. And Chris will talk in more detail about those shortlisted firms.
Yeah, and just to echo what Amy said about the evaluation committee and the work that they've done. I mean, it was a very it was a very involved process. And the committee spent a lot of time poring over the submissions, the statements of qualifications from each of the firms and, you know, did a really nice job of vetting all of the issues and, you know, making their determination. And so, as Amy indicated, we got a number of great submissions from architects, which didn't surprise me. It's a very large project and a very strong district. And, you know, we knew we would get a lot of interest in the project, and we did get that. And the three firms, and the customary step is to shortlist firms for interviews. And so, the three firms that the evaluation committee shortlisted were DLR Group and Shore Architects. DLR Group is an Omaha firm. It is headquartered in Omaha. They've got an international presence, and they do have an office in Columbus here. And the international presence for DLR is really something that, you know, that they spoke a lot about during the interview process. And, you know, we or the evaluation committee, I should say, certainly did a great job of talking to folks that they have designed and built schools for to get a handle on, you know, what it is that DLR could bring to the table. Shore Architects is a local firm with an office in Dublin. Tony Shore has been practicing architecture for quite some time. And, you know, our firm has a tremendous amount of experience with Tony and other projects. And so, he's, you know, he's certainly been a local player and architect in the field for a good long while. Moody Nolan similarly has a national is a national firm with offices in Columbus. Moody Nolan, as you may recall, is the firm that did some work for the district earlier on in the project. And then Triad is another strong local firm with offices in Columbus. And then Design Group is another firm that was shortlisted with a they've got offices in Columbus and Pittsburgh. And then they partnered with Perkins Will, that is another national firm headquartered in Chicago with an international presence. They don't have a local office, but they have done some significant work in Ohio. They did the work on the Upper Arlington City Schools project and then also the Grandview project. So, they certainly have a presence here in Columbus with the work that they've performed in and around your district. So, after going through all three of those folks in grave detail, the evaluation committee has a recommendation. And the recommendation for the board from the evaluation committee is DLR Group with Tony Shore. Again, DLR is a large national firm with a deep bench for the design phase. And Tony Shore leads a local firm with a great deal of construction administration experience that will certainly benefit the very large high school project. And so, after poring through the various documents and submissions from each of these firms, the evaluation committee has determined that that this is the firm that they are recommending for the district's building project. So, that's very exciting. And DLR is a great firm and Shore, Tony Shore is as well. One of the things that DLR brings to the table, I think, that was certainly something that the evaluation committee had a lot of appreciation for is a process that they refer to as the bold process. And it involves bridging organization, learning, and design. And they've got a phrase in their material. And the evaluation committee, you know, certainly vetted this out. But they refer to it as behavior commissioning. And so, they work with the students and they work with the staff to help both understand how to best utilize the new facility so that you're not in a situation where they design and you construct a new facility. And then they move off into the sunset and you don't have any idea how to use your new facility. They, through their bold process, they ensure that you're going to be educated along with your students as to how to best utilize these new facilities. So, it's a really exciting process. And Steve, I don't know if you want to weigh in a little bit on DLR for the for the board?
Yeah, so, you know, we sent the document that, you know, describes the organizational behavior approach to their design team. And so, what our evaluation committee was excited about is the process of designing a new building is really also a process of redesigning learning. And so, the bold building organizational learning design is really an approach that excited us because there's going to be a lot of listening to teachers and hearing from them about what they would like to see. But there's also going to be a lot of education about modern design. I mean, one of the things we don't want to do is build a high school, like a 1950s high school in the 20th century or the 21st century. So, it's really, really important that we all learn together and our organization grows, in particular with the high school, which is the biggest part of this project. So, we checked references and, you know, throughout the country. And we learned that this process really does lead to significant change and engagement and, you know, inspired learning. So, that was one of the key factors in selecting DLR and Shore. Also, the community engagement was another key factor. We want community members, parents, teachers, staff, students to be a part of this process and want to hear from them. And we want our design professionals to show them what could be. It'll be a really aspirational approach to design. So, those are the two main things that we're excited about. In addition to all the things that Chris and Amy talked about, it's a very large firm. They have a very deep bench. And when they do this organizational behavior design approach, they bring a lot of people to the table for that engagement. And their communication strategies are also very strong. So, thanks.
Yep, yep. So, that's going to be the recommendation from your evaluation committee made up of your administrators and a couple of community members, a couple of parents as well. And so, that will be a motion for you to consider and pass on tonight as to whether or not to accept the evaluation committee's recommendation with regard to DLR. So, that'll be coming up here shortly. And I will have Casey continue on just to give you an update as to where we are in the CMR procurement timeline.
Wait, actually, before you do that, can we take a quick pause and see if board members have any questions about either the process or the recommendation about the architect of record? And I can't see everybody. So, if anybody, if any board members have questions either about the process that the evaluation committee used, I know that we've all now had an opportunity to actually see the RFQ, see all of the submittals. So, if any board members have any questions at all about the process or about the recommendation itself, let's do that now, and then we can move on and talk about the CMR process.
I think it would be, this is Daphne Maury. I think it would be important to share that there were teachers involved on that committee as well.
Yeah, I know there was a slide. It went quickly that.
A high school teacher, Ray Adams, was involved. And Jessica Williams, principal of our high school, was involved in the committee. The true teacher engagement will come with the bold process. But yeah, they were they were very helpful in part of this. Also, Catherine Hope Cunningham is a parent of a middle schooler, and she was also a former teacher. So.
Yeah, I guess I just want to say that I appreciate having the opportunity and the time to get to look through the actual RFQ and to look through all of the submittals. It was helped like it's one thing to talk about it. And I appreciate very much all of the time that the committee put into this, not just reading the documents, but actually interviewing the firms. For me personally, it was really helpful to actually read and see the documents. I'm not, I don't know what kind of learning that is, but I need to actually have a physical document to read. So, it was helpful to see those submittals in conjunction with hearing the recommendations. So, I appreciate that. I know, I mean, each of the submit, for anyone who's wondering, each of the submittals themselves were hundreds of pages. So, I appreciate the work of the evaluation committee, not just in reading through all those documents, but then there were some follow-up questions that got asked of some of the finalist firms and all of the reference checking that went on and the interview process itself. So, thank you to the evaluation committee for putting in all that time.
Thank you.
Any questions before we move on to CMR? Okay.
First slide in our CMR process, you'll see the CMR procurement timeline that the evaluation committee has been through. So, you'll see the construction manager at risk, the request for qualifications was published. And there's a bit of a gap there. And that's because the Ohio revised code requires that that RFQ be published for 30 days. Those statements of qualifications from the CMR firms were received. And the evaluation committee met to shortlist the CMR firms. There was a request for proposals that was issued to those shortlisted CMR firms. And actually, today, we had the pre-proposal meeting with the shortlisted CMR firms. The proposals will be due back to the district on February 3rd. And the evaluation committee will conduct interviews with the shortlisted CMR firms on February 8th. The CMR procurement process and selection process is a two-step process. So, the first step is the CMR request for qualifications or the RFQ. For the RFQ for this project, seven firms submitted their statements of qualifications. And six firms were selected by the evaluation committee to move on to the second stage. The second stage is the request for proposals or RFP. And the six firms will submit proposals, and those six firms will also interview. The evaluation committee will review and consider each pricing and technical proposal that is included in response to the RFP. And the CMR firms will be ranked for best value. So, best value is where price is a factor, but it's not necessarily the deciding factor in selecting the CMR firm or making the recommendation to select the CMR firm. This slide shows the six selected short, six shortlisted CMR firms. And those are Gilbane, Turner, Rusili, Smoot, Robertson, and Cornica Cozing partnering with Alfred.
And Amy, let me just pause there on that slide for a minute. You know, much like the submissions that you received for your architect of record, again, you have an incredibly stout group of construction managers that are interested in your project. I mean, really, this is a this is an all-star team of construction managers to select from. And so, I think that, again, just reflects the greatness that this project is going to be and, you know, what, you know, what these folks want to be a part of, what they want to have their name on. And so, you know, it's a it's a great lineup. So, the evaluation committee will certainly have its hands full to go through that. But, you know, it's a good problem to have for sure.
So, we have three different CMR selection options. One is to use one CMR firm for the total project. Another is to use two CMR firms, one for the high school and then one for the elementary and middle schools combined. And then the last is to use three CMR firms, one firm for the high school, one firm for the middle school, and then one firm for the elementary schools. And this is still the option that we go with is still going to be decided after we receive the proposals back from the CMR firms.
And so, you know, this is really a pivotal, critical decision to make. And there are different factors that go into this determination as to whether or not to move forward with one, two, or three CMR firms. It's a little bit different than the architect of record because, you know, obviously, the construction managers are going to be putting in a significant amount of work. And so, there are issues of risk that go into having, you know, just one out there. And there are issues of risk that go into having multiple firms out there and that you've got, you know, folks, you know, a number of firms that are out there at the same time. And so, what we're going to do through this process and what the evaluation committee is going to do through the process is receive, and the way that it's been teed up for the CMRs at this point in time is let us know what you think the benefits are that you can bring to the project if you are a solo, part of a team, or part of three. And if you're, you know, part of three, which which one do you want? Now, we're, you know, we suspect that the majority of them are going to come in and say, well, we'd like to have the high school project. But what we will do is we'll learn through the process what they can bring to the table. We'll learn, the evaluation committee will learn about the, you know, the way that they are thinking about delivering the project. And so, as this process unfolds, we'll be able to come back to the board with a little bit tighter of a recommendation as to how we think the board should proceed, one, two, or three, and why that is. And so, we'll let this process unfold a little bit, and then we'll come back to you with a little bit more information at a later date. And I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to add anything in there on that?
No, I think you covered it. I think, you know, going through the process once again with a with a good evaluation committee and looking at the options and using your counsel about, you know, how many is appropriate. These are, you know, this is a very large project Phase Two. So, making the right choice is going to be really important.
Yeah, yeah, it certainly is. And, you know, again, you've got a great lineup of CMR firms to select from. So, we are certain we'll get a lot of good information through this evaluation process to bring back to you. More reading, more reading.
Can you remind us again, when is it that anyone anticipates having a recommendation on on CMR?
So, Amy, I'll let you just go back to your prior slide on that. So, the CMR, go ahead, Amy. I didn't need to interrupt you.
It's fine. The CMR interviews will be on February 8th, and those are all day. It takes all day to interview the six CMR firms. And the interviews will end at four. And currently, the evaluation committee is planning on meeting after the interviews are complete. And if the evaluation committee, if it follows the same trajectory as that Perkins Tech committee, it may take us a few days and a few meetings to follow up on the references and the interviews. So, I think that a good goal would be that third week of February. But, you know, we're going to try and push it and meet as much as we need to to make those recommendations to the board. I think those were all of our slides on construction manager at risk, if there are any other questions.
And we've got just a few slides on the owner's rep role as well. But, you know, as we did with the architect, we can pause here and talk a little bit about the CMR if we'd like to.
So, I know that, I mean, we have, as a district, we used a CMR for the for the building of Lincoln Elementary. But I guess for the benefit of our community who might not have any understanding, is there maybe just like a digestible explanation that would be helpful for the community to kind of understand the role that the CMR plays in the process?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. So, prior to, and, you know, this is going to sound a bit like a history lesson, but I'll get to the punchline here shortly. Prior to 2012, all projects in Ohio had to be delivered through what is referred to as a multiple-prime delivery model. And, you know, most of those projects were problematic from the perspective of the owner had a number of different contracts, sometimes as many as 20 on a project of the size of the high school, maybe even 30 separate contractors out there that it's trying to manage and get all of those folks to play well in the sandbox with each other. The statutory creature that was created to help manage that process is referred to as a construction manager agent. And so, on every project, an owner would hire an architect and then a construction manager. And so on every project, an owner would hire an architect and then a construction manager agent, and then throw the project out to the low bid environment and then drag back 20 individual, you know, companies that they'd have to marshal along to get the project done. And so, and I guess I'll give credit where credit is due. Ohio State came in and said, we've had all of our fun. You know, we've had all of our enough fun here with the multiple prime delivery model. We need something better. Other states do it differently. Why can't we? And so they came up with new delivery models. One of them was general contracting, one of them was design build, and then one of them was construction manager at risk. And construction manager at risk really surfaced as the darling of the bunch because you can bring your construction manager on during the design process to help the architect get the project together, get it sequenced, understand phasing, figure out how all the pieces and parts are going to move together. And then as you move forward and you get the design process or the design documents complete, which is referred to as the construction document phase, when you get that complete, you put the project out for what is referred to as a guaranteed maximum price proposal to that C M R. That C M R will then give you its total price for the project. And then here's the best part of it. The C M R will then take responsibility for all of those subcontractors downstream. So you, as an owner, get the benefit of having a construction manager from start to finish. And then the construction manager has responsibility for all of the subcontractors and material suppliers for the project. So it, as I said, it's really grown into be the darling of the delivery models for public projects in Ohio.
Yeah, maybe I would just add, and Chris, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I personally think the benefit in a C M R model is that, and especially when you bring them on at the right time. I think if you don't bring them on early enough, then, then my point might be a little bit moot or might be a little bit lost. But when you bring them on at the time that you're hiring the architect and you're having them go through that design process with you, there's recommendations that they can make during that discovery phase, like when, when we're imagining what these spaces will look like and the architects walking through public engagement. They can be taking a look at it, and maybe it's, I'm, I'm trying to think of an example, like divided light windows, right? And so you might have this idea that all the, everybody wants divided light windows in the building, and then they can price them out based on those conversations and go back to the architect and say, okay, this is going to be cost X, but you can have the same design and style for cost Y if you, you know, if you go in this direction. And so I think what they're able to do is actually, like oftentimes what will happen is you'll design a project and you'll put it out to bid, and the next thing you know, the bids come back and you're either, you know, X percent overbid. And then now you've got to either figure out how to cut costs from the projects. You might have to rebid, you might have to redesign. This, this is really kind of an iterative process, and it's taking what the public and what the inputs are that are coming into the architect and working real time to make sure that that makes sense with the budget. And also they're part of the design process itself.
Yeah, yes, exactly. That's, that's perfectly said. Constructibility reviews and estimating are two of the, the main benefits that a C M R brings to the table. You know, constructibility reviews are, you know, when they walk into the room and they say to the architect, you just designed a table with no legs. Now, we need to install some legs. That's kind of a facetious thing to say, but, you know, that's the kind of thing that they can do with the constructibility review and, you know, to help the architect. And D L R would never design a table with no legs, by the way. But that, you know, that's what they can do on the constructibility front. And then on the estimating front, yeah, you're, you, you hit the nail right on the head. The, the, the design will unfold in phases. And so you will go through schematic design, design development, and then construction documents. You will have a very hard stop at the, at the schematic design phase. And then again, at the design and development phase with estimating. And so you'll, you'll hit a hard stop and the architect will say, okay, school board, here's where we are with the schematic design. Does this look good to you? And give you an opportunity to buy in on it. And then at the same time, your construction manager will come in and say, okay, here's where you are with the estimate. It looks like you are ahead of budget, behind budget, on budget. And then you'll have another opportunity to do that again at the design development phase. And that, and the construction manager will help you do that as well. And the thing that's great about it in the C M R world is the C M R is going to be the one who is providing you that guaranteed maximum price. They really have a tight invested interest in making sure that the estimates are good as you move through the process so that you stay on budget, which is really one of your, obviously, critical concerns.
Yeah, and I don't know at what point, I know we didn't bring the C M R in for Lincoln Elementary at the same time that we were going through the public process. I don't know what that difference was. I mean, I think that's, in my opinion, one of the lessons learned from Lincoln. I mean, I, I think we have a, I mean, it's, it's going to be a beautiful building. And I think between Triad and, and Corona, you know, the, the delivery of that product is, is absolutely exceptional. But we're be, we were behind schedule, right? I mean, let's not, you know, we made certain, you know, we were hoping to be on a faster track. And I think we didn't bring the C M R on until several months into the process. And I think once we did, that's when things started to really kind of align with the project itself. So I think that is one of the lessons learned from, from that experience. And then maybe helps us to be on a better track for, for these projects.
Yeah, I, I would say, Jennifer, we actually did bring them in fairly soon. I think, and you're, but you're exactly right. We learned a lot of lessons, and I think we were a little lofty in our design. And Cornica Cozing did exactly what you suggested. It helped us, kind of reel us in a little bit, and then, and then have a design that, that was more within the, the cost structure of, of the, of the project. And so, yeah, I think the way you described it was perfect. Maybe we brought them in a little bit late, but I think at the end of the day, you're right. We learned a ton from that relationship because so much of this design world is, is about listening and having the builder be there for those listening sessions does them, you know, gives them a lot. And then they can also, you know, do exactly what you said, give you options and, and let you know what the cost will be for the discussions you're having, you know, and the, and the aspirations you create, so.
Anybody else have any questions about the C M R selection process? The, the recommendation, well, we don't have a recommendation yet, but about the process at all, or? Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to chat a little bit about the owner's representative role. And so, you know, I think the first thing right out of the gate is, you know, what is an owner's representative? The owner, the owner's representative is really the eyes and ears advising the owner on any issues that arise during the project. And so it's just a, a separate entity that really has the district's best interest in mind. You know, we go back to the conversation that we were talking to, talking about a little while ago with the construction manager agent, where that, that construction manager is an agent of the owner. This owner's rep role has really come in, into prominence since the law changed and the, and the delivery models available to public owners changed. It didn't exist, I mean, it did exist, but it wasn't as, as well used and well known. But now that we've got these delivery models where you've got single points of responsibility and a general contractor and a construction manager at risk, and then a design builder, there's still the need to have that entity on the project that's got the owner's best interest at heart. And especially on a project of this size. Now, for the Lincoln Elementary project, you certainly have a strong group of administrators that didn't need an owner's rep on that size of a project because you were able to staff it in-house. But on a project of this size, there's going to be a significant amount of additional work that is going to go in. And so an owner's representative is going to help, help navigate that process, really thinking about, you know, making sure everybody's, everybody knows who's on first, that kind of a thing. They'll do things like review design face submittals, review C M R pay applications, review, you know, change orders for the project, and just kind of spot check and make sure that things are, are going as smoothly as, as you'd want them to be. And, and really to help run down issues that pop up. You know, and again, the size and complexity of your project with multiple sites, a relatively aggressive schedule that'll require, you know, professional insight and assistance is something that your owner's representative is really going to be able to assist with and, and benefit the project. And then I think at the end of the day, it, it's going to alleviate the district's staff of performing this really heavy oversight and coordination of all of these construction professionals. With six projects moving at the same time, it, it will be incredibly beneficial to, to have an owner's representative. And just to, you know, as a frame of reference and as an example, Upper Arlington has a building project that is going on right now that is a little smaller than yours. But, you know, they've also got an owner's representative assisting with that because they've got multiple buildings and, and different locations that are all going on at the same time. And, and they've really seen a lot, a tremendous value from having that position on the project. And so, you know, with that, we'll talk a little bit about the procurement process. It's a, it's a shorter process. It's, it's just an RFP, you just put an RFP out. And then you review those pricing and, and responses back once they come in, conduct interviews of firms that you'd like to speak with to see what they can help you with on the project. And then you can make your selections. So it will look a lot like the, the architect procurement and the, the C M R procurement, but it'll be a little bit abbreviated in that the, they'll give you their pricing and, and their proposal right up front with, with their initial package. So it'll be a shorter process, but it'll be informative nevertheless. So with, with that, is there any questions that anybody has about the owner's rep role? And, you know, what value that, that will bring to the project?
Do you, does anyone know at this point what the anticipated timeframe is for the owner's rep? Do we, is the RFP already out? Where are we in that process?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, that's it, go ahead.
Okay, we have not put the RFP out yet. We've got it. We were seeing how far, we, actually, we're probably going to end up putting it out next week or maybe the week after. We wanted to let the C M R process unfold a little bit. We, we suspect that maybe some of the C M R firms will put in to be owner's rep as well. We're not quite sure about that, but it, we're, we're giving some consideration as to when we want that to drop, but it's going to, it's going to drop in the next week, maybe, maybe two weeks. And then we'll have a pretty short timeframe for them to turn around and, and get us their proposals. So we'll, we'll have a lot of information for you on that front at relatively short period of time.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. The, the, um, why would we need a third position if the architect should be working in our best interest and the C M R should also be working in our best interest? Why would we need this owner's representative position? That's my first question. And the, the, the other question I have is, is the, this third position basically kind of an antagonistic, like a counterweight that we're adding to the process? Is that, is that what we're going for? And is it usually filled by a firm that didn't get one of the two, two earlier positions?
All great questions, and I'm just writing them down. So the first, the first question you asked is, is, is why, why would you need an owner's rep firm? And, you know, and I do get this question quite a bit. And, you know, and it, and it does resonate. The, you know, the issue is, you know, and I'll rephrase the question. Why do you need somebody else with another set of eyes on the project? And the reality of it is that, you know, your owner's rep is going to help identify issues on the project that might not otherwise catch the eye of the architect or catch the eye of the, the, the construction manager at risk. And is also going to help translate what's going on, on the projects for your administration to make sure that you're, you've got as much information as you could possibly have about the project in real time. And, and I will give you an example, you know, there, and I'm going to give you a negative example only because I'm a lawyer and I always get wrapped around the axle of negative situations. If you have a situation where there is a issue with the architect, a design issue, there, you know, there are, maybe there are multiple change orders that, that are landing on the project that are for, you know, quite a bit of money. And you're trying to understand what, you know, what the issue is with the change orders and why they are occurring. Your construction manager is going to get paid for those change orders. And so the, you know, the mindset might be, well, he's getting paid for it, so he's going to be in favor of the change order. Your architect is, is going to be, you know, not wanting to be blamed for that particular issue. And so might, you know, characterize it in a certain way. And I, I don't mean to put anything negative on, on, on design professionals or on construction managers, but the reality of it is, you've got, you've got, you know, you've got six buildings going in, and I have yet to be on a project where there's not a change order. And I also have yet to be on a project where a board hasn't had a question about one of those change orders that, you know, really cuts to the bone, and, and they want to understand exactly what's going on. And they want to hear what's going on from somebody who doesn't have a horse in the race other than the best interest of the owner. And so that's where your owner's rep comes in. And on a project of this size, you're going to be faced with those issues. I mean, you are faced with those issues on the Lincoln project, and your staff is, was able to, you know, handle that because of that, you know, that, that project was certainly manageable for them. But on a project of this size where you've got, you know, six buildings, six things going on at the same time, things are going to be, you know, moving around very quickly. You're going to want to have that, that type of an entity on the project to help you navigate those types of issues. And, you know, and I can, I can certainly give you a few war stories, if, you know, a few additional war stories, if you like, where one of the, one of the consultants that you'll have on your project is a commissioning agent. And so the commissioning agent goes back and forth between the contractor and the design professional to help make sure that the HVAC systems in the building are installed correctly. And that entity writes reports about what happens and what they see as they go through the testing process. And the owner's rep is spot on all of those reports. And I've had any number of projects where the, you know, the first call I received from, from a representative is an owner's rep saying, McCloskey, we got an issue here that we need to help you, you know, have us deal with. And so we, you know, we just try and help navigate through that. But the owner's rep is really the, the entity that, I hate using this phrase, but it's so, it fits perfectly. They just know where all the bodies are buried on the project, and they've got the owner's best interest at heart. And so that leads into your next question. Is it an antagonistic role that we are creating out there by having an owner's rep? And the answer is no. Your, your typical owner's rep, especially the very good ones, which is what you'll get on this project, they're not out there to, to show their value by dragging down the architect or dragging down the, the construction manager. They're out there to help facilitate the project, and they're out there to help, you know, drive a solution. And I, I was, happened to be in a, in a meeting, a large, it was a large building project, and the owner's rep was in there, and the architect and the construction manager were kind of going back and forth about who is responsible for what. And the owner's rep, you know, as construction is, pounded his fist on the table and said, how about you both follow the contract? Let's start there, you know, that kind of, you know, it's a leveling thing. It's not, it's not intended to be an antagonistic role. In any event, it is really just to help you as a owner of a massive building project navigate that project. And then the, the, the third question you asked was, is it typical for one of the construction managers at risk to, to, that is not chosen to fill the role of an owner's rep? And what I will say is, and I, instead of saying yes or no to that, what I will say is there are certainly construction managers at risk that also serve as owner's reps. And so there are certainly folks in the crew, the very high caliber crew that you've received for this project, the C M R firms, there are certainly folks in that bunch that function as owner's reps. And if they are not awarded, some aspect of the project might want to throw their hat in the ring to be the owner's rep. There are also very strong owner's rep firms that do nothing else but serve as owner's reps. And so I think it would behoove us to hear from both, maybe the folks in the pool that want to serve in that role, and then also folks outside that may want to come in and, and respond to an RFP and show you what they could bring to the table.
Before you move, I, I think Daphne has a question too. But before you moved beyond that one point, can you just dig in a little bit deeper on the possibility that we get the same firm, a same firm bidding for owner's rep as who submitted for C M R? I guess, can you just give a little bit of detail about how the firms themselves handle that? I mean, is it separate divisions of the firm, just for, for our? I mean, is it separate divisions of the firm, just for, for our understanding and community's understanding?
Yeah. So they, they may be the same individuals. It would just depend on what team they propose to staff your project. And so right now, they, they're going to come to the table with their proposals and they're going to identify who they think is going to staff the project. And they may staff it in a different way than they might staff as a construction manager, as an agent, then they might staff it as an owner's rep. And, you know, some of the larger firms, they've got owner's rep folks in their, you know, in their organization. That that's, that's all they do. They, they just serve as owner's reps and, and that's how they function and they're very good at it. Others might not, others might say, you know, I'll take this same team and I'll put them, you know, on your project as, you know, the owner's rep team. We'll learn more about that through the R F P process. And we'll be able to take, you know, the R F P that they gave us for their construction manager at risk services and then lay that next to, if they do, you know, submit R F P for owner's rep services and just, and, and, you know, toggle back and forth and just see what differences they're thinking, you know, how they're approaching the, the project differently.
Chris, my question is, could, could or have you seen the owner's rep role be a source of communication between for our school district, the board? And I mean, obviously they're going to be with the administration, but then taking it one step further to be the communication conduit to the board?
Oh, certainly, yeah. You can, you can, and it's all in the types of services that you want to contract for with them. If you wanted to have a monthly report out from your owner's rep, you know, in the board meeting, you could certainly do that. I mean, that can certainly be one element of what it is that they do for you. They might, they might prepare a monthly report for you so that you can actually, you know, see what the status of the project is on, on all of these various fronts. You know, and we can, we can weave that into the R F P, certainly if that's something that you'd be interested in. And just so that they can talk to us about what that might look like.
I would be a proponent of that. I don't know about my colleagues.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, I would be a proponent of, of that as well. I think that's an important question and I'm glad you asked it. I mean, I think that while they're certainly working for the administration on a day-to-day basis, I think the board has obvious fiduciary responsibilities and oversight. And I think any sort of additional reporting, not just to the board and, and whether it's in the finance slash buildings committee or whether it's the full board once a month, I, I guess I don't necessarily have a preference as long as that it's something that's on a regular cadence. And then I think even reports that, you know, could be posted on the website that could go out to the community as well so that we can track progress and show people where we are. I mean, I think that's going to be an important element to an owner's rep that adds a personal, it's, it's beyond just like the actual site issues and construction and design issues. It's that continuation of public outreach and public information that I think is going to set an owner's rep role apart from those other two functions as well.
Yep, that's a great point. And, you know, I've certainly seen reports, monthly reports from owner's rep firms on projects where they, where they, one of them, it was pretty nice, it was an aerial shot of the, of the site. It was just a single building project, but it was an aerial shot of the site. And then it was just a comment on where you are with the budget. And then it was a comment on what the schedule's looking like. And, you know, you're just kind of not getting into the, straight into the weeds of everything, but a nice, high level report out so that you can just get a flavor for where things are and, and what's happening. And, you know, certainly if there are any strings in there that you'd want to pull on and just get a little bit more information, that's a great jumping off point to, to use. So with that, I don't have any additional information for you. If you've got any other questions about the owner's rep service, I can certainly answer them. But we'll look to get that out. Like I said, the R F P for that service in the next week or two. And we'll certainly add the monthly report out component, just to see what it is that they would have to say about that. And we'll have a lot more information for you here very shortly.
Anybody have any other questions about, really about any of it? The owner's rep, the C M R, the architect, any of the processes? While, while everybody's still here, does anybody want to ask any other questions? Steve, is there anything that you want to add at all about the process or?
No, I want to, you know, everybody's time's valuable and I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I think this was really educational and important as we begin to go through these processes. Things will move very, very quickly. And so I think this discussion was very good and, and, and we, you know, came to some things. I never, you know, would have thought of the, the owner's rep reporting out, but what a great idea, having pictures and aerial shots and all the things that, that Chris talked about. So we, we really appreciate your input and your guidance. This recording of this will, will be an important thing for our community to see if they weren't able to log into YouTube. But they'll, they'll, you know, be informed of the process. And so I, I just want to thank Casey and Amy and Chris for being here tonight. Very nicely done, very helpful tonight.
Hey, Steve, speaking of the recording, will we be able to sort of post it and cut it so that people who want to understand about the building process don't have to sit through the entire COVID committee meeting in order to get to that? And so it's just kind of a, an easy way for them to get right to this content?
Yeah, let me see if we can do that. I, I think we should be able to do that. If, if it's not, if, if we can't do it, then what we can do is at least inform people when it starts and ends minutes, right? So, but I, I think it can be done.
I think our high schoolers could probably do it.
Yeah, you're right.
Our TV class, right?
Yeah.
Just comment that he can do that. Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, so before, I guess before we move on, we do have an item for board action, which is actually taking action on the recommendation that we, we agree to authorize the superintendent to work with other administrators and legal counsel to enter into negotiations. But right before I move into the board action, I just want to make sure, are there any other questions before that?
Do you want Chris or, or Casey or Amy to explain the resolution? So it's not a fait accompli, right? It's just, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, right. Let's get, I guess, we'll get the motion on the table and then open it for discussion again. And at that point, it would be great if, I don't want to read the resolution. So it would be wonderful if either Chris or Amy could explain it just kind of a synopsis of what it's authorizing after we get the motion on the table. So I move that we accept the resolution as presented in the agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Is there a second?
A second, Mrs. Chrysler.
Mrs. Chrysler, any discussion? I guess either Chris or Amy, could one of you just kind of, without reading the resolution, can you just kind of explain in brief what we are authorizing?
Sure. Amy, do you want to, do you want to take a run at that?
Sure. So the resol- resolution that you have in front of you today is to select D L R group as the architect partnering with Shore. And what this does, it allows the superintendent to enter into negotiations and come up with an agreement and a fee proposal. We'll get a fee proposal from D L R. And then once we have the fee proposal and the agreement negotiated, we will come back to the board and we will get approval from the board to approve the agreement and the agreement amount. So tonight would be the approval of the evaluation committee's recommendation to select. And sorry, it's my kid's bedtime. It's the recommendation to select is the approval for that. And next time we'll bring back the approval of the agreement.
Any questions from board members or any other comments? Okay, Mr. Verlingo, can you call the roll, please?
Ms., I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Pickle Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Chrysler?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Nobody wants to go home? I guess we are all ready.
Y'all did it at the same time.
Thanks, Mrs. Chrysler. Any discussion at all? Mr. Verlingo, can you call the roll one more time?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pickle Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Chrysler?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston? Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
It's eight.
I didn't hear.
Did you get it, Mr. Verlingo?
Yes.
Okay, it's eight thirty-one P M. We are adjourned. Thanks again, everybody. Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night.
Thank you.